I'd like to call the Alexandria City Council meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Mr. Fowler to do the invocation and Mr. Hobbs do the pledge.
That's a surprise. By his, by Father, please bless this council in conducting the business of the city and doing the best we can for our concern. Your name replied, amen.
Little chip apologies.
I pray that we live in peace with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who was that? Uh, let's see, roll call?
Mr. Lawson.
Certainly.
Mr. Fowler. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Smith. Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Hobbs. Mr. Marshall.
President.
Mr. President, have a forum.
Uh, next is the consent calendar. There's something missing on mine here.
Move on ahead.
I'll second. This hall, this hall of business. Well, it's moved to second, we're going up to the, uh, moved by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler. Uh, let's go, we go to resolutions, question? All in favor? Okay, go on to... Item F. Resolutions. Ordinances and resolutions.
This is ordinances for final adoption, subject to a public hearing. Number eighteen is to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning property located at six twenty Wheelock from SF two, single-family moderate-density district to SF three, single-family high-density district.
I'll move to deny, second. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? For denial.
Right.
For denial. Okay. Motion carries.
Number nineteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning property at or near the twenty-four hundred block of Jackson Street from SF two, moderate-density district to SF two, office overlay, single-family moderate-density office overlay zoning district.
Move to deny, second. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson. To den- uh, to deny, and, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries, to deny.
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
Number twenty, to continue public hearing, structure located at twenty-seven oh three Main Street, Arthur Smash, James Smash owners.
Yes, Van Dwyck Community Development, uh, twenty-seven oh three Main Street, like to continue until March eleventh.
We'll continue, second. And then moved by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries.
Number twenty-one is to hold a public hearing on the condemnation of twenty-three structures, and the, the list is in your books.
I've never seen such an aggressive approach. Twenty-three's pictures.
It's in your books.
In the books.
Now, sir, can we, can we do all of this in one, one?
All the ones that are in, uh, for continuous, unless someone objects, February twelfth.
Yes, well, we have seven for continued to February twelfth.
I'll move to second. Moved to second, moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson.
For continuance on items two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
And eight, yes.
All in favor, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. For the, uh, continuums.
Well, for the eleven, uh, condemnation?
Right.
Yeah, we have eleven of them that's gonna be recommended for condemnation. If one, I could call them out and then you could vote on them all at one time, or how you need to do it.
And call them all, we can make one vote.
Yes.
Make him call out the addresses.
You gotta call it. You gotta call addresses and all of them, we can make one vote.
All right then, all right, what, eleven structures for recommended for condemnation is, uh, thirty-seven, twenty-eight Beffler, thirty-one, ten Chicago Avenue, twenty-two, sixteen Call, eighteen eighty-one Harris, twenty-two, eleven Houston, fifteen, twenty-eleven Street, twenty-two, twenty-six Over, thirty-six, thirty-three Red Shell Alley, and then next two, thirty-six, thirty-four Red Shell Alley, thirty-six, twenty-five Southland, two oh seven, two oh nine University.
Is anyone from any of these? All written in there that we can deal? Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion?
How we doing on these condemnation, I know at one time it was almost called prohibitive, uh, to come back on the road with, uh, some of demolition costs, is that kind of leveling off, or do you see it, uh?
It's an average around four thousand, thirty-five hundred to four thousand.
It's an averaging around thirty-five hundred to four thousand. We get, uh, several, uh, bid proposals on this, and we take the lowest bid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries, for condemnation of those.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm W.T. Armitage, I've been appointed to represent the owners of the remaining four structures, uh, number twenty being thirty-six oh eight block, the owner Bethel Williams, uh, was properly served and she was properly notified.
Condemnation?
And it's recommended for condemnation.
Just read them out, we'll keep rolling.
Uh, twenty-one, uh, is fifteen nineteen South Harvard, Ethel Abel, uh, twenty-three oh four Overton, Sabrina and Andre Sandifer, and three twenty-seven Wheelock, Michael R. Fontenot.
Anyone from any of these divisions? I'll move for condemnation. Second. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Extends public hearing. Item H. Committees.
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
No report.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Silver.
No report.
Legal Committee, Mr. Hobbs. Utility, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Community Development, Mr. Hobbs. Personnel Insurance, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
A and E Regime, Mr. Silver. Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I have a resolution to authorize, uh, expenditures of funds for the Mardi Gras parade expenses related to LSU participation, I see we have a ambassador for LSU, uh, and the person of Dr. Greg Gormanis, I think he'd like to speak to him, I move.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, uh, a- as you all know, thanks to the funding by the city and the support of the mayor and the administration, the city council, uh, Mr. President, we're trying to bring you three days of Mardi Gras with public parades this year, and we have our inaugural classic cars and college cheerleaders on Friday, February the first. Uh, LSU is the first university to say they would participate, and the concept is four cheerleaders per classic car, but given that, uh, LSU has won the national championship, we are, uh, trying at, at the eleventh hour to get more of a presence for LSU in the parade with the idea of having a float dedicated to LSU with more than four, four cheerleaders, so that's what I request, and if we can come through with that, through the efforts of Mr. Williams, remember the LSU Board of Supervisors is working on this, and we have some other contacts, and I think it would really augment our family-friendly festivities if we start on Friday with something like that, and then end on Sunday with Southern and Grambling being in our parade, which as you, most of you know, we're, I think, the only city where both, uh, both Southern and Grambling participate in our parade. Be available to answer any questions, and it's not a guarantee, but it's something we're trying to do.
Good idea, and, uh, me and you, on Friday night, it'll end, uh, right at dusk, right?
Well, you know, the, uh, the, the Friday night will begin at four o'clock with the classic cars and college cheerleaders, but we hope to, you know, move that into Taste de Mardi Gras, which the Louisiana Restaurant Association sponsors, which is a big event, and then the whole weekend of activities, the Saturday Parade, the Crew of Louisiana, which you all are supporting, but not financially, uh, but supporting, and then Sunday's Parade.
First time we haven't done something financially.
Look, your moral support, Mr. Silver, is very, very important, and then of course...
Is what?
It's very important, and, and of course, uh, you know, the family-friendly nature with Julie Hino representing the Jack Hannah family, Jack Hannah's Animal Adventures, uh, the Go Wild in the Alexandria Zoo, it ties in, the theme with Washington Mardi Gras that the city and the Convention of Visitors Bureau's come up with, so what, really what we're trying to do in this fifteenth, uh, anniversary of public Mardi Gras is really move towards a more unified, cohesive, comprehensive approach, uh, a unity approach of really, you know, moving our community forward.
We spoke earlier, Dr. Gormanis, about, uh, making sure the rules were adhered to, and I'd appreciate it if you could share it, uh, with the city so we can make sure it's posted on our access channel, uh, for not posting up on public property.
We, we, we will do that.
Utility pose, and things like that.
And not just the utility pose, but, you know, the other issue is, in the past, we have, uh, really banned walkers, we've banned some types of throws, but now, thanks to the, uh, the foresight of the city with the barricades, many of our rules are outdated, so yesterday evening, we updated our rules, uh, in terms of trying to provide for safety, security, and fun, but doing away with the rules that had to do, for example, with bouncing balls, you know, bouncing balls were an issue because they would bounce under a float and some kid could hurt him or herself, so, uh, yes, we'll be glad to get those, uh, as soon as, as soon as they're, they're produced, we worked on them last night and passed them last night, so you wanna have those publicly displayed?
Chief was, uh, very, uh, eloquent in his expla- explanations on crossing the barricades, and I don't think people challenged that too much, no last time, but those type things ought to be self-explanatory.
It's rather simple, if you cross a barricade without a police officer's permission, you're gonna be arrested, and, you know, people understand that.
New comments to the city, uh, I understand that.
Yeah, I got arrested six times last year.
And disorderly.
But we thank you all for your support, and we, uh, weather permitting, that's, that's the unknown here, we hope to bring you another family-friendly Mardi Gras that really showcases our, you know, many, many good things about this area, thank you.
Any discuss- any other discussion? Mr. Smith?
I, I'd like, uh, to have it one day when we can put together, Maran, put together a book, a with, that we can distribute, I was looking at, uh, I had something come through the mail about, they're talking about economic development, they have development, uh, Lake Charles, all the way to Hammond, I ten, I twelve, and they develop, they show all the festivals, they show where they make, they make that new beer that they make out of, like, cherries or what, and then they're talking about sugarcane fields, ethanol, and all this, they even market to, by Mississippi River, they have thousands of acres, uh, for sale at thirty thousand dollars an acre, and they market all to, have you never been to Hammond, down that way to see the antiques, you know, that they have, uh, in that, but they marking that whole I ten, twelve car, and they talk about the festivals, cultural festivals that are happening around Lake Charles and Goldbridge and all that, and that's something that, uh, that we need to look into, we market the Mardi Gras, we have Khan Festival, they, I mean, they, they, they are taking in all the other cities around there, and they're marketing, they're marketing land, uh, development, and everything in that area, and what they're trying to do, they, they, they building up, and we just have to be open-minded, uh, in this area about what we doing, and, and quality of life, and these festivals and things like that, that makes it happen, that's what people looking for, that we didn't overtell, and, and, and we operate on the tax base, I'd like to see us, uh, mayor that we can say, staff or somebody, put together a book, get with these other mayors and cities, the high festival that's in the county, and all this, and we can, uh, market these, uh, different areas, so, uh, I got this book through the mayor, and they, uh, they really going after, they, they, they trying to get all the business from, uh, Lake Charles all the way down, and they even can market it back to us, so, you know, I wonder, I miss that.
Next, uh, meeting, we'll have something, kind of, uh, uncovering, we're gonna do the challenge for, and they're gonna talk a little bit, there, but it's gonna probably tie in with what you're talking about, maybe we can have also a video, uh, DVD presentation, I know you've been there in the past.
Gentlemen, we can do that emotional, look. His mood's taken, it's just, all in favor? Pose? Motion carries. Oh, I, I, got, we got anything else?
Yes, I have. Just wanna remind all of you about retreat, uh, the letter out January tenth to the council, and I know that the president has talked to, uh, all of you gentlemen about getting response to him by January twenty-eighth, I was hoping that maybe by the eighteenth this Friday, that, uh, at least some initial notions about what you expect in a retreat could come forward, in other words, we may need some more time to talk about real specifics, but at least, uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Marshall, some notion of, do we want to stack a retreat in terms of, uh, working on team-building exercises and things, or do we wanna get in, right into some projects and talk more about, will it be kind of an extended public meeting where we're talking about projects, or both, and how much of each do we wanna do, so maybe if, uh, you just think about it over the next couple of days, you and I, you could talk to the men, and you and I could talk about that, we're in the way.
Okay.
Trey?
Uh, yes, uh, are we going into, uh, new matters at this time? Where are we on that? I have, I have some additional, any other business, uh, we have, uh, legal department has a, a resolution, they request be considered to authorize the city of Alexandria to file any necessary lawsuit or lawsuits to compel the removal and disposition of certain watercraft or similar objects which are impeding property or have been left unattended, stored, junked, or abandoned, and otherwise to revive with respect there too, uh, this pertains to the structures that are on the levee or on the riverbank.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson.
You said all that to say we're gonna remove the riverboats today, I don't, remove it, right?
Uh, Mr. Johnson asks that this specific resolution be adopted, it's in conjunction, by the way, with the Red River Waterway Commission, which is gonna join with the city in the lawsuits.
We need a roll call, those are, need a motion, second. We have the resolution, we need to add it.
I move to add, uh, sorry.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Moved by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, removed and reset, all in favor? Pose?
I got, uh, two thing.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I wanna introduce this to the faction, and I'd just authorize a consulting contract, and here we're going to change, uh, saving service, uh, through this way introduction.
A second. Mr. So, second by Mr. Fowler. Put, put on the agenda?
Right.
Okay.
Motion is second to introduce it.
Yeah, it's motion second to introduce it, so, we vote, right? It has not, okay, it's instituted, okay.
Yeah.
Fowler, second.
That's me.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, I got, I got one here. Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Larry Milton? He stepped to the podium, please. He stepped to the podium. Okay. You got the mic.
So soon, huh, thanks, chief, uh, yes, my name's Larry Milton, uh, I'm actually, uh, back to, uh, Louisiana after thirty years, uh, twenty-seven years military, Air Force Thunderbirds, uh, crew chief, also part of NASA, uh, what I came back to do is, uh, I've been working around the world, actually, with a product that I've been working twenty-two years with, uh, with Mr. Jack Cracklauer, who's the founder of the product, what I found is, uh, the answer to the problems of the world, uh, so, what we're looking at here, and, uh, just strap your seatbelts here, 'cause, uh, what we're showing here is a product that actually, uh, exceed the presidents, in fact, all of the world's, uh, uh, what they're looking for as far as emission reduction, they're looking at a ten percent, I'm sure you guys caught, uh, you know, been keeping aware of this, you know, emission reductions, the global warming, as well as, uh, keel to protocol, Mr. Fowler, from my, if, uh, my understanding, you're looking for, uh, you were looking for a way to, uh, because of the complaints with the, uh, smoke reduction on the buses, at one time, they had problems with, uh, smoke?
I don't remember.
All righty, uh, well, anyhow.
I'll take credit.
Okay, well, it's all yours, yeah.
As soon as we found out about it, we fixed it.
Okay, well, what you fixed it with is the product, it's called Maximizer, and what it does, uh, it actually eliminates, uh, premium and mid-grade fuels, but it creates complete combustion, the space shuttle is the only, is the only, uh, uh, vehicle that uses the product right now, uh, we were blessed to, and I say blessed, to come here because I stopped the progress in, uh, Salt Lake City, and, uh, we have three other metropolitan cities that's requesting the product now, but, uh, since I was born here, and, uh, you know, been keeping abreast with, uh, Alexandria, and, you know, decided that, uh, I think we need to do something a little different and more positive for the people, and also be able to generate millions of dollars of tax revenue for this area, now, to be fed intravenously financially from the rest of the world, because this product is what they need, now, we, we were able to collect quite a few data, uh, with this product, uh, from the city, and, uh, with the bus department, we, uh, did some numbers, and, uh, they were spending less than seven hundred dollars a month, but they were gaining over nineteen thousand in fuel costs, not including downtime of maintenance cost, as well as the downtime, uh, we also, uh, did, uh, we have the numbers to show where, in the month of August of, uh, this year, uh, we were, I think the expenditure was a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, uh, for the fuel, well, we implemented in the two, uh, streets department, that cost normally is always in- normally is always increased the next month, it went down a hundred and sixteen thousand. So, uh, we, uh, with the buses there, we, uh, also started generating, uh, where they, uh, were, uh, were spending like, uh, they was, uh, using a hundred and ten gallons of fuel, uh, per day, per bus, they went down to fifty to sixty gallons, so you see, this, this is not, this is, this is a small piece right here, now, Mayor, I don't know if you were aware, you were aware of this, but this is just a small piece of the pie, now, we only did, we implemented in also, uh, Mr. Ronnie Jones, uh, section there, he ca- he called me and he say, "Look here, I'm gonna trust you that you're gonna do something for me here, 'cause these vehicles are breaking down, I need some help," and I told him, I say, "Look, just let, let me do what I need to do here, and I'll help you out," he haven't had one of them to return back to, uh, the motor pool.
Sounds like a plan, Mr. Milton, I hate to interrupt you, but...
Mm-hmm.
Time has become your enemy.
I understand.
Tell you what, uh, I'd, I'd like for you to maybe bring, uh, a presentation to us...
Okay.
At Public Safety and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnson, all right?
Yeah, at the, uh...
At next council meeting.
Okay, yeah, and, and I'll, and I'll wrap this up, but the only thing I wanna do is I wanna let you, uh, you know, so you guys are aware of what we have, but what, what we can do for the, to show you what we have, to take the package and then, uh, make this a positive thing for the city of Alexandria, so, you know, I'll be more than happy to do that.
He may wanna start, then, Mr. President, with the administration.
Okay, because, uh, like I say, the tests are in, everything's in, so whenever, uh, you know, you guys, uh, you know, we can set the meeting from there to make it happen, but like I said, uh, yeah, I just wanted to do it for the city of Alexandria, okay?
Ronnie Jones says all right.
We'll look at it twice now.
Anything else?
You didn't build it up too much at all, so... Our expectations aren't really high about that, so...
I have, I asked Ms. Janice Joseph, richest to come, uh, Janice used to...
She's eight, eight.
Used to be one of my, uh, students on my bus, she's the head coach, women's basketball coach at Louisiana College.
Tried to hire her at Southern, too.
Ah, good evening. It's an honor to be your mayor, counselor, well, I'm here on behalf of Louisiana College and, and, um, a special request, I guess, we have a benefit game coming up, February the ninth, uh, a year ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer, and I would like to do something, so the local hospitals, Louisiana College, and we're hoping we can get the city of Alexandria and Pineville involved as well with, um, raising some funds to bring awareness of this disease to our community, I've, um, been, since I've returned back to Alexandria, had a chance to visit a lot of the hospitals and, and, um, have had a chance to see that there's so much information that needs to be out to the public and to our community about this disease, and we're teaming up, and we're hoping we can get the city to team up with us to raise money for our local hospitals, just to bring awareness, um, again, the game is gonna be February the ninth, we have two games, the women will play at one o'clock, the men will play at three o'clock, and, uh, we're just hoping some kind of way we can get, um, some sponsorship or some help through the city of Alexandria as well with, um, advertising this event, and, um, I just took advantage of the opportunity to come and speak to you guys tonight about that, and I don't know if it's the right group to talk to, I stopped by Lisa's office earlier today, but I didn't get a chance to meet her, um, I can always put together more information, um, I know it's a lot of media in here, so if anybody wants to plug it for us, we appreciate that, um, and I'm not here to plug Louisiana College basketball, I'm here talking about breast cancer awareness, so, um, um, so any help we can get, we're getting that out there, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Move adjourned.
Move second adjourned.